All right, everyone. Good afternoon from not so sunny northern Nevada. My name is Christine Callagher. I am the Vice President of Partners and Programs at the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. For those of you in northern Nevada or some of our rural communities who are experiencing this crazy amount of snow that we are being blessed with at this moment, I hope that you're staying warm, staying safe, hopefully able to stay off the roads as much as possible. And for those in southern Nevada, I hope that you are enjoying buckets and buckets of sunshine. We'll take as much of it as you would like to share. And I hope that you're all having a wonderful day as well. I want to thank those of you who are members of the Nevada Obesity Collaborative for being on this call. This is the second of our regular calls of the month. It's wonderful to see you all. I missed you at our last meeting on Valentine's Day. I hope all had a wonderful time. For those of you who are guests or new to the Nevada Obesity Collaborative, I want to warmly welcome you on behalf of our entire group. And I hope that you will find today not only to be informative, but that you will be inspired to join us in our efforts today with the Nevada Obesity Collaborative. So before we kick things off with our esteemed guests and presenters, I'll go ahead and just run through a little bit of information about the Nevada Obesity Collaborative. If in fact I am able, there we go. First, I want to thank our sustaining partners. These are partners of the Reno Sparks Chamber who have committed to underwrite this program and our involvement in it. So thank you to Prominence Health Plan, Clark &amp; Associates, St. Mary's Health Network, and special program sponsor Nevada Cancer Coalition for believing in this effort, in this statewide collaborative to address the disease of obesity. And we're excited to have you involved. I also want to introduce you very quickly to this amazing and prolific list of collaborative members. I'm not going to go through them one by one because there are so many great, great members to list. But I want to thank each and every one of them for joining the collaborative this year as we embark on our three different work streams. And you'll be learning more about those here in a moment. And now I would like to reveal to you, after much, much, much deliberation and many edits, I think there have been about 15 if I am counting correctly, what we're calling our Nevada Obesity Collaborative One Sheet. So this is kind of a one-stop shop for information that is completely shareable. It's public facing, that lets people know a little bit more about what we do. So here you can see it's two-sided. You've got one side that represents all the amazing, amazing environments that we enjoy in Nevada, northern rural and southern Nevada. And then, of course, we have some information about the disease of obesity itself and our mission statement as the Nevada Obesity Collaborative, which is "A statewide working group of community members across multiple sectors whose singular goal is to reduce obesity and weight-related coexisting conditions in Nevada, leading to improved equitable health outcomes and overall wellness." That is why we're here. That is what we're doing. And again, I want to extend the invitation to any of our guests to join us in what we do. Please feel free to email me after this call, and I would love to get you connected. So I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen. And now it's my immense pleasure to turn over this call to Chris Severson with the Nevada Business Group on Health, who is going to introduce our presenters for today.
Thank you, Christine. Good morning or good afternoon. I'm Chris Severson. I'm with the Nevada Business Group on Health. And we are extremely pleased to be able to co-sponsor this event with the chamber. Just a brief note on Nevada Business Group on Health. We are a group, a small group of dedicated employers in the north and some in the south that are a trusted source for employers and health benefit professionals who are seeking solutions to better manage the costs and benefits and the health and productivity of their covered populations. As one of the nation's leading business coalitions, NVBGH can provide your organization with access to innovative programs, resources, and employer-directed activities that highlight industry trends and best practices from leading-edge employers and industry experts. And I have to say that some time ago, and I'm thinking probably four or five years ago, we started looking at the claims of our employer members and looking at what some of the drivers are. And oftentimes, things such as obesity and diabetes and things like that may not be the principal diagnosis. But what we found is that they were certainly drivers of our population health and claims costs for employers. So we've been looking at this for quite some time. We're very pleased to be able to join the chamber and the Nevada Obesity Collaborative and looking at this as a group and really trying to do a concentrated effort. And welcome all of you to join the collaborative if you can. It's now my pleasure to introduce our two speakers for today. And forgive me, but I am going to use my notes so that I make sure I don't forget anything. Dr. Alexander Eisenhardt is a robotic bariatric and gastro encephalial surgeon in the Nevada Surgical Associates in Reno, who specializes in minimally invasive management of obesity, reflux, esophageal and stomach disorders, and select abdominal general surgical conditions. He is a clinical assistant professor of surgery at UNR and is board certified through the American Board of Surgery and is a fellow of the American College of Surgeons and American Society for Metabolic and Bariatric Surgery. I hope I pronounced that all right.
You did. Thank you.
Also, we have Dr. Dana Trippi, is a board-certified obesity medicine specialist and founder of the premier physicians' weight loss and wellness with locations in both Las Vegas and in Reno. She completed her medical degree at Kansas City University and residency in emergency medicine at State University of New York at Buffalo. Emergency medicine fueled her passion for obesity medicine, and she is dedicated to educating about the disease and ensuring coverage for obesity treatment in her work with the Obesity Medicine Association's National Advocacy Committee. I think we're truly blessed to have these two individuals speak to us today, and I hope you enjoy this program. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. And thank you, Christine. This is an excellent and very sort of, you know, exciting chance for me to be able to speak to all my colleagues or my new friends. And for those of you who haven't met yet, I would love to meet everybody in person someday. This is a very important topic that's near and dear to all of our hearts. And my goal, both for myself and Dr. Trippi today, is to give you guys basic overview of what the obesity as a disease entails as far as what are the prevalence and the associated comorbidities? And of course, what are the possible treatment options available? And what all of us, and especially the employers, that have employees who deal with obesity can do to help their employees and help their people get a better handle on this and potentially achieve much healthier and sort of better lifestyle after the treatment has been undertaken? So the goal is to have this discussion. And feel free to stop me and ask questions either via chat, like Christine has said, or you can even pipe in at the end. We can discuss, have a broad discussion between all of our speakers and all of our participants. But at the same time, my goal is to give you an overview, not delve too deep into the scientific aspects of obesity or treatment, but hopefully explain the basic foundation and the underpinnings of what we do on a daily basis. Now, give me one second. I'm going to share the screen if I can. All right. Hopefully you guys can all see this right?
Looks great.
Okay, perfect. Well, again, I'll try to keep this semi-educational and semi-entertaining, and I'll try not to bore you too much. And the goal is to finish this within 20 minutes and then have a discussion that hopefully will be a lot more fruitful, especially once we go through some of the facts, both on the obesity side and the treatment side, and help people get the foundation of what we're dealing with on a daily basis. So the quick overview will start with what the definition of obesity is. You know, what are we dealing with on a daily basis? As you can see on the slide, the official definition for obesity, according to the Obesity Medicine Association, it's a chronic progressive lifelong disease that's multifactorial, meaning there's a lot of different contributions as to why people become overweight obese. And it is a disease, so it's not a condition. It's not a, you know, issue with willpower. It's a true medical disease that has to do with excess fat storage and abnormal metabolic processes in the human body. You know, it is damaging to the individual, as we can all imagine. And on top of it all, it's damaging to the society. It affects each individual obese patients, you know, longevity, psychological well-being, social well-being, emotional well-being, and it affects almost every aspect of life for the entire duration of lifespan for each patient. So this is just some brief classification to get everybody on board. You know, when we deal with patients with obesity, you will hear a lot, you know, people refer to BMI, which is Body Mass Index. And that's essentially a classification table that's been created, you know, 50, 60 years ago to try to help us qualify and sort of allow us to do research in obesity and has become very pervasive and used by the insurance plans and medical systems. And obviously, every research article that you read to try to classify each degree of obesity and, you know, basically group people into different classes based on how heavy they are. So you will hear us refer to Class 1 obesity, Class 2, Class 3, Class 4, and it has to do with Body Mass Index of 30 and above. So I'm not going to belabor the point, but officially, when we refer to somebody with obesity, that means their Body Mass Index is 30 or higher. When you hear the term of morbid obesity, which we're actually trying to get rid of that term now and switch it to severe or very severe obesity, that means the Body Mass Index is greater than 40. And then, of course, we have classes that go up to Body Mass Index of 50 and actually 60 now as well. So the true definition of morbid obesity is when somebody is 100 pounds over their ideal weight or their Body Mass Index is greater than 40. Now, the exceptions obviously exist to every rule, including this one. So when we are talking about pregnant women or professional athletes, especially the bodybuilders, or very young or very old, the Body Mass Index numbers are not as accurate as they should be. So we try to stay away from relying purely on those numbers, and we start including other characteristics as well. Now, the cause of obesity is very difficult to understand, and we still don't know exactly every aspect of what causes obesity in each individual person. But we're getting a pretty good idea based on the last 50-plus years of research. Now, the traditional way of thinking about obesity, which is calories in, what you eat, and calories out, what you burn as far as your physical activity or exercise. And that's what I learned in that school myself many years ago. That has been disproven as to be too simplistic and honestly not necessarily true. So the true cause of obesity is, like I mentioned earlier, is multifactorial. Multiple components go into this. If you look at the portion of the slide on the right, you can see the blue factors that are actually individual-based, so that's in person, in individual person's control. But then you see other factors that are outside of your control that actually help cause obesity or help prevent obesity, if you look at it the other way. And a lot of it is basically what the government or what the society creates for the people living within it. So you can see the education has to do with it. The finances, the healthcare policy, the food policy, or the food deserts, as we call them, the lifestyle planning, even things like walkable cities can actually change the degree of obesity that exists. You know, so it's a very, very difficult problem to deal with. But we do have ways of addressing it, and especially we can address the factors that are all in blue, which are individual factors that lead to obesity. Now, this is a busy slide, and I'll try to keep it as simple as possible. You may or may not have heard of obesity set point theory. So that's essentially what we call metabolic adaptation. Now, in, in brief, obesity set point theory, it's an evolutionary defense mechanism that will preserve your body weight and maintain your fat stores, because your body thinks you're trying to starve it. So if you look at the slide or the portion of the slide on the right, what happens when you gain the weight and you try to lose the weight on your own without any external help? You will, of course, try to change your diet, and you potentially increase your exercise capacity or exercise routine. So that is all very, you know, commendable and very sort of good initial efforts. But your body is really good at trying to fight you off. And what will happen is your body will go through metabolic adaptation, which means that hormonal environment in your body will change to promote weight gain. And the way it works, it works basically on two different factors. One, it stimulates your appetite. It increases your hunger. And then, two, it slows down your metabolic rate. So if you look at the portion of the slide on the left, you can see the exact mechanisms, how this is accomplished, which is a little too scientific, and we don't need to belabor the point. But to make the long story short, the body is very good at trying to retain weight or gain weight, and is very bad at losing weight on its own. It will fight your efforts of trying to lose the weight and will potentially prevent you from doing it successfully on your own without any external help. So now, as far as the current situation is concerned, we're in a true obesity pandemic. Obviously, everybody's aware of the COVID pandemic, but along the side of the COVID pandemic, the pandemic that nobody talks about is the obesity pandemic. You know, if you look at the numbers, and these are very recent numbers from 2021, I believe, in the United States, as you can tell, three-quarters, oops, I'm sorry, I'll go back for a second. Three-quarters of the people are overweight, so there's a Body Mass Index of 25 and above. Now, 42% as of last year are obese. And out of those, almost 10% are morbidly obese. That means they're at a very high risk of having all the comorbidities associated with obesity. And of course, the number that's scaring both Dr. Shane and I, that's the childhood and adolescent obesity, which is, you can tell, almost quarter of our children under the age of 19 are obese as well. Now, in the world, the numbers are also scary, maybe not as scary as the United States, but we're looking at 40% of overweight, 15% of obesity, and then close to 1, maybe 2% at this point of morbidly obese people around the world. Now, these are the numbers in the state of Nevada, and these are the numbers you saw Christine post on the flyer from our Nevada Obesity Collaborative. First of all, the state of Nevada ranks as 41st in the state, in the health system performance, which is quite low, as you can imagine. I mean, there are very few places like West Virginia below us, which is not something to be proud of. We do have 31% of adults living with obesity in the state of Nevada. And we have 18% of adolescents between the ages of 10 and 19 who are obese. Those numbers are pretty high, as you can imagine. The interesting fact, what you may not know, is the increase in obesity took place over the last five to 10 years. So in the last literally five years, the numbers jumped 6% for adults. And that's a huge increase in obesity. Of course, a lot of it is driven by COVID and the lack of exercise because of COVID. But, you know, the numbers unfortunately are not stopping, and the increase continues to get higher and higher, basically year by year, every year. And as you can tell, the other number here is, the state of Nevada is number seven in the mortality from cardiovascular disease, which of course obesity is the number one risk factor for cardiovascular disease in addition to smoking. So as you can tell, we're not the healthiest state out there. We don't have the best ability to help these patients. We have pretty poor access to healthcare, especially for rural communities and communities with low socioeconomic levels and minority communities. And, you know, because of that, the population with obesity continues to increase, and they're just not getting the care they need. So now, this is projected numbers by the CDC, so the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, over the next 10 to 20 years. As you can tell, by 2030, half of the United States is projected to be obese. So that's Body Mass Index of 30 and up. You know, that's a huge problem, because a lot of those patients will have multiple medical issues. They'll have problems with psychological and social well-being. They'll have issues with being able to go to work and actually become, you know, successful and productive at work, because they have to deal with medical comorbidities. So this will affect our society in general, as we know it. This is the world. So the United States, unfortunately, is not the only country that's dealing with obesity. So the countries in red all have high rates of obesity and morbid obesity. So you can tell that North America is obviously leading the way. Australia, Middle East, and, you know, Latin America as well, which don't have the numbers for that. So now, a lot of us are familiar with what obesity causes on the physical side of things, right? So for any of us who are involved in medicine and any kind of healthcare provision, you can tell that there are over 60 conditions that are associated with being overweight or obese. The sort of most important ones are listed here on the left. What people don't realize and don't usually think about are the conditions that have to do with social health or psychological health of the individual that are also linked to obesity, you know? Anything from discrimination, bullying, having reduced employment opportunities, poor quality of life, poor social skills. And then on the psych side of things, you know, you have depression, anger disorders, eating disorders, and suicidal ideations. All of that is linked to being significantly overweight or obese. This is a very hot topic of research currently. As we've realized over the last 20 to 30 years, maybe, obesity actually causes cancers to grow faster and to happen at a much younger age and to be more prevalent in patients who deal with obesity. So at least 14 cancers, as we know right now, that are, most of these cancers are hormonal cancers and have to do with the change in the hormonal environment in the human body caused by obesity. These are the cancers that tend to happen at a much younger age, much more frequently, and a lot more difficult to deal with in patients with obesity. Now, as I mentioned earlier, obesity also costs us as a society and each individual patient a ton of money. You know, the number we have sort of seen being talked about is almost $400 billion a year is being contributed to medical care for patients with obesity. You know, of course, more than billions, you know, more than, you know, half of a trillion dollars is actually being attributed to loss of productivity, loss of wages, and poor employment opportunities that are being faced by these patients. And then, of course, on the individual side, you see that each individual patient will actually suffer a financial cost of being obese or morbidly obese. So now, now we know what the problem is. What do we do about it? Well, luckily, we've been studying this issue for many, many years. And I'll show you the first weight loss procedure that's been tried, which is more than 1,000 years ago. So clearly, human society has been dealing with problems of obesity for many, many years. And by now, we've actually realized that this is a very difficult, multi-component problem that requires multiple interventions, oftentimes to be done at the same time in order to get a successful desired outcome. So the aspects of obesity care involve behavioral or lifestyle changes, pharmacological therapy, and surgical therapy. And like I've mentioned earlier, oftentimes, you have to employ all of these opportunities or all of these options in order to get a successful result, especially if you're dealing with patients who are super morbidly obese or with Body Mass Indices above 40 or 50. So now, at a lot of places, a lot of academic centers, a lot of big hospitals, or a lot of big practices have established comprehensive weight loss centers of excellence. And that usually involves a medical physician, a surgical physician, a dietitian, you have a psychologist who has experience in treating obesity or eating disorders. You have an exercise physiologist, a physical therapist. You have nursing coordinators and nursing educators. So it literally takes a village to be able to provide adequate care to these patients. In Reno, we're trying to do that. You know, our approach is to create a mesh of providers, such as Dr. Trippi, Dr. Shane, you know, all of us, Dr. Frederson, all of us who are involved in the care of these patients, to be able to create these comprehensive weight loss centers without actually being located in the same area, you know? So we're providing different aspects of this care, and we're all obviously communicating with each other, but we're not physically co-located at the same place. But the idea is the same, you know? It takes a lot of specialists with different concentrations to be able to provide adequate care to these patients. So now, as far as the treatment of obesity itself, so a lot of factors go into this. But the basic idea is you have to realize where you are on the continuum of care. So what is your current weight? What is your weight loss goal? What are your medical comorbidities? What are your, you know, previous operations you've had? All of this goes into a complete profile of a patient that dictates what's the best treatment approach is. And as you can tell, you know, if you're on the lower end of things, if you're on the lower end of the Body Mass Index scale, meaning you don't have to lose as much weight, you know, obviously, the most appropriate thing to start with and probably just to end there would be the lifestyle modification, you know, including dietary changes and exercise, implementation of exercise routines. Now, the more weight you need to lose or the heavier you are, obviously, you have to get more intense and more aggressive treating the conditions, treating the obesity and associated conditions. So we're talking about pharmacotherapy, so that's the anti-obesity medications, which Dr. Trippi will mention in a few slides. We're talking about novel minimally invasive bariatric techniques and then surgical approaches as well. And the most important thing to learn about this, it's not either or. It's not you do one or the other or the third thing. It's additive. So you start with one. If that doesn't work, you add the other component. You add the third component. You add the fourth component. And only then you can provide adequate care to some of these patients and achieve great results. So when we deal with patients with severe obesity, you know, if you're looking at the bottom side of the slide, you know, Body Mass Indices of 40 and above, you have to employ everything you have available from lifestyle modifications, diet changes, exercise routine, medical pharmacotherapy, surgical approaches, and all of it has to be done at the same time to get the best result possible and to make sure that the result is durable and lasts, hopefully, a lifetime. Now, these are the medications that are currently approved by FDA to treat obesity. I'll take a break for a second, and I'll let back to Trippi weigh in, because that's her specialty.
Go ahead and continue on. I have a few points I'll bring up right at the end. Sounds so good so far.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Appreciate it. So I won't belabor the point, but to make the long story short, there are a lot of medications available, including some of the newer medications, like semaglutide, that are very effective at managing obesity. And, you know, to go back to one slide, if you can see right here, you know, with medications alone, you can lose up to 20% of your total weight. So your total body weight, you can lose up to 20% with some of the newer medications out there, which is a substantial amount and has never been accomplished before with medical therapy up until about five, 10 years ago, you know? Obviously, if somebody needs to lose more than 20% of total body weight, then we're talking about surgical and minimally invasive endoscopic approaches as well. So speaking of surgery, like I've mentioned earlier, the first documented case of bariatric surgery or weight loss surgery was in the 900s. That's actually King of Spain, King of Lyon. And he, as a teenager, was so overweight that he could not walk, ride a horse, or pick up a sword. And he was basically deposed by his court novels and kicked out of the country completely. So his grandmother took him to a famous Middle Eastern Jewish doctor who basically sutured his lips and put him on a diet full of opium, is a liquid opium diet, which he only had to drink through a straw. And because of that, he lost almost half of his weight. He was very successful. Of course, if you can't eat and drink opium, which is in and of itself forces you to lose the weight, you become very successful as far as a weight loss goal is concerned. So then he returned back to Spain and got his throne back. So that's the first truly documented case of weight loss surgery. The nice thing is that things have changed quite a bit since then. So since 900s, we've actually researched this area quite extensively. So now we know why surgical approaches actually work for obesity and work very effectively for obesity. And it's because there are a lot of components involved. You know, initially, people used to talk about restriction of malabsorption, but it's only two of the at least five different mechanisms that lead to weight loss after surgical interventions. You know, you're talking about gut-brain axis. You have changes in the microbiota of the intestine. You have locally derived hormones from the fat cells. You know, so all of that changes after a successful surgical intervention, leading patients to developing or to sustain weight loss that's successful and durable for many, many years and hopefully lifetime. Now, as far as different operations that are currently available, I'm mentioning the gastric band only mostly for historical interest. There are not a lot of surgeons who are still doing this operation. There are a lot of patients who have the gastric band in place, but they are not being placed any longer because they can cause some issues with reflux and esophageal function. But these are the three operations you'll see being mentioned quite frequently. You know, you get the wound-wound gastric bypass, sleep obstructum, you know, switch. The basic idea is we change the anatomy of your foregut, so your stomach and small bowel, to a point where your food absorption and the quantity of food that you can take in is significantly altered. And that leads to a profound change in your hormonal profile that actually accelerates your weight loss and improves diabetes and all other medical comorbidities that were mentioned earlier. I won't belabor the point because I don't want to get too technical, but the results with surgical approaches are excellent. As you saw on the slide, on one of the slides, a few slides back, you know, it can lead to up to 40% of total exit or total body loss. So now, this is probably more important for most of you, how employers can address obesity in their employees and their customers, hopefully. This is a very busy slide, so I won't belabor the point. But the approach to managing obesity has changed quite a bit. Us as a society and especially the employers can do a lot more than they think they can and they used to be able to do to help their employees achieve desired weight loss goals and desired healthy lifestyles. A couple of things I want to mention is the programs should be and are embedded in the overall employee wellness programs and the culture of health that helps to disseminate the teachings, the prevention strategies, the educational materials, and access to appropriate providers throughout the entire culture of the employer, you know? So everybody has access to that. You know, you also have recognition that medications and surgery might and oftentimes should be offered to people who especially deal with obesity and severe obesity. And then employee involvement, communication, and promotion, and especially leadership involvement is vital to making sure this program works. As far as the call to action, and this will be my last slide that I'll finish here. This is what every employer should be able to do to make sure that they achieve a healthy population among their employees. You know, the best and the first thing to do is to assess the needs and priorities of the employees, you know, a lot of times you can do this through surveys, you can do. You can hold focus groups, oftentimes you have large stakeholder meetings. And that will give you an idea of what people want, right? The next thing you should do is recognize what barriers your employees deal with in order to get access to appropriate weight loss strategies. Oftentimes it's cost or lack of insurance. The other time is lack of access to appropriate providers, appropriate providers, especially if they live in. Difficult to reach areas, rural areas here in Reno, you know, one snowstorm will automatically shut down the entire. Transportation pathway to any of the provider, patients with disability, both physical disability, mental disability. They have a lot of issues and of course, work stress and caregiving issues can potentially cause a barrier to getting appropriate care. The next thing that employer should do is to engage with the healthcare providers and the insurance plans. Unfortunately, we can't escape. The insurance plans being involved in this because they are the ones who subsidizing a lot of the appropriate care for the patients or employees with obesity. So the best thing to do is be engaged with them, be engaged with people who provide the care and be engaged with people who pay for the care to be able to connect the dots and actually get a. Sort of global comprehensive pathway for people to access care with minimal intervention or minimal interruptions, hopefully. And then, of course, every successful program should involve a comprehensive approach to obesity. So we're talking about prevention through lifestyle modifications, smoking cessation, dietary changes, you know, providing better quality foods in the. Places of employment to education, you know, it's, those are easy to do. But then, of course, treatment or access to treatment is probably the most important for patients who already have obesity. And then the last thing that's usually is found to be helpful is to track and analyze the participation data and satisfaction data. Unfortunately, as employers, you won't be able to get access to healthcare data, meaning the. Blood pressure numbers or the BMI numbers for each individual patient, but you can develop some kind of a tracking system that measures participation satisfaction data. And you can tell whether the patients or your employees are actually benefiting from the services being provided. Now, on that note, I'm going to stop here. If you have any questions, comments, feel free to contact me individually. Or we can chat about this later and I'm going to pass this off to Dr. Trippi. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Eisenhardt. That was, that was a very good presentation. It was very thorough. If I had to add just a few points to that, to reiterate that, you know, obesity is a disease. It fulfills the definition of a disease. So that means that it's, it's really no different. And the way we treat it is no different than if we were to look at someone with high blood pressure, with diabetes, with cancer. These are all diseases that fall under the same definition. So first and foremost, identifying that I, I'm somewhat of a storyteller, so. I would love to go back to that obesity set point theory because that was a really, really important slide for people to understand obesity. If you, if you, if anybody remembers The World's Biggest Loser and that whole television show where you had. Severely obese people that were exercising given a diet. And, and had probably some behavioral modification. Three out of the five pillars that we normally address as, as obesity specialists. What was lacking in that obese, what was lacking in that, in that challenge for The Biggest Loser. Was the arm of pharmacology and or surgery. So the top three things that they focused on in, in that show was behavioral modification, exercise and nutrition. And they, they lost just copious amounts of weight, no doubt about it, from beginning to end, you can see their transition. Unfortunately, their experiences within the years following that show and, and to their. Very bitter disappointment, the majority of those people regained all their weight. Every single last pound was regained. And, and, and in that bitter disappointment, to be quite frank, that was the biggest gift to science that we had. Because it really broke it down to there is something missing in that, there was just no sustainability. And, and, and that really did change a lot in the following years in terms of identifying. What is it going to take not just to have somebody lose weight, which is important in and of itself? But what is it going to take to have somebody be able to sustain that weight loss? That's really honestly the bigger question that, that science has, has really taken off with. And, and brought us to the. The, the novel concept of, of adding anti-obesity medicines and or surgery to this mix. That is, that, that has truly become the forefront of our intention. Historically, I love the fact that Dr. Eisenhardt put the King of Leon in there surgically. The anti-obesity medications were actually brought in to mimic what surgery would do. Or to come close to what surgery could do to help people lose weight. Very early on, historically, there's, there's only a specific group of people that, that. Could attain bariatric surgery. And it did leave a gap of people without much assistance. Especially if, if they were beyond prevention of obesity and, and had failed prevention. The, the biggest problem becomes what kind of treatment can you offer the masses of people? That either won't make criteria for bariatric surgery. For what, whatever reason, what is in the middle there that can help the majority of people that want to lose somewhere between three and twenty percent? There's this huge gap. So that is where anti-obesity medications have really come into play. And as advocates, which we all are on the Nevada Obesity Collaborative. We're here to, in part, help advocate for. Not just the prevention of obesity, which is truly what a lot of these wellness programs have initiated, where they do focus on. Nutrition, behavioral modification and exercise. Our job is to complete that circle by adding on what happens when someone fails the prevention part. And that is the treatment and that is where those anti-obesity meds and surgery definitely will come into play. A lot more fervently here in the future and hopefully as advocates, we can get that point across. That that is a necessary arm in the treatment plan to, to fill in that gap.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Trippi and, and Dr. Eisenhardt for that presentation, for your insight and comments. We'll go ahead and open it up to questions now. We have about twenty minutes left and I've got some, I've got some, some questions up my sleeve, but I would much rather open it up to the group. Please feel free to unmute yourself, show your face if you're comfortable or put some questions in chat so that we can discuss.
Thanks, Christine.
All right. It looks like we do have a question in chat from Ava Lyon. Thank you so much, Ava. With someone on obesity medication, would, would someone on obesity medication need to continue taking medication long term? Good question.
Yes, the, the answer to that is yes, absolutely, most likely. If I were to take that back to hypertension, if I were to take that back to. Diabetes, these are, these are chronic diseases and obesity is identified and defined as a chronic disease. That doesn't mean that it can't be managed and maintained, just like a blood pressure. But by no means does that mean that you take somebody off of a medication because they are managed really well. Just because someone has a blood pressure of one twenty over eighty. Doesn't. It doesn't excuse the fact they still have hypertensive disorder. It's just that it's managed well. And so you do keep them on those medications to make sure they're managed well. Especially our newer AOMs, our anti-obesity medications, they are FDA approved as chronic weight management medications. There's a reason the word chronic is in there because in all actuality, unfortunately. If you pull people off these medications, they will have a tendency to regain their weight. And that is, is something that defines this as a chronic disease.
Thank you so much, Dr. Trippi. I think, I think we've done an amazing job, you know, especially addressing. Addressing the impact on adult populations. I, I'd really love, hopefully, Dr. Shane is up for it. He hasn't been. He was not warned about this ahead of time, but I, I, I think I would like to loop in Dr. Shane and of course lean on Dr. Trippi and Dr. Eisenhardt as well in this, but. What, what are we seeing right now in terms of obesity treatment in children? We know that, of course, the COVID nineteen pandemic has revealed and exacerbated the reality of that issue. I would love to hear, love to hear what's happening in, in the realm of addressing obesity with, with youth and with children.
I can start off with that. I'm sure many of you, if not most of you, have heard the. The buzz about the American Academy Pediatric Clinical Practice Guideline that was released in the beginning of January. And this was a very important guideline. It was the first ever clinical practice guideline released for. Dealing with child and adolescent obesity. And is, you know, already, you know, shown to you very nicely by Dr. Eisenhardt, you know, the. The numbers that we're dealing with in, in regard to children with obesity. In this state and also, you know, nationally. You know, we're, we're at a more than one-fifth of all children between the ages of two and nineteen currently have obesity, so. Quite a large burden and, and, and most of these kids will become adults with obesity. So, you know, looking at, you know, ways of, you know, decreasing all of these. Chronic comorbidities for the future, I think, you know, I think it, you know. It behooves us to, you know, look at, you know, dealing with these, these children now rather than waiting till things potentially worsen later. But the, the big, the big changes with the AP clinical practice guidelines are, and what has been creating a lot of stir is. The strong recommendation to offer anti-obesity medications for kids twelve years and up with obesity. And to also offer metabolic. Bariatric surgery as an option to kids with thirteen and above with severe obesity. And to also even consider, there was a consensus statement or consensus recommendation to even consider medications in kids. As young as eight years of age. So I think this is, you know, kind of created a lot of. You know, discussion and I think, you know, people are just, and, and I think most importantly, it's create a lot of awareness. At what a, you know, significant problem this is. And hopefully it's going to lead to improvement in healthcare systems. Insurance providers. In, in overall, you know, medical and medical and care in general, you know. Taking heed to these recommendations and, and improving not only prevention measures, but treatment for children who are currently dealing with this disease.
Thank you, Dr. Shane. And, and for the sake of time, we've got, we've actually just received quite a few fantastic questions in chat, so. We'll go ahead and put a pin in, in this issue for now and, and move on to some of these others. First and foremost, and these two questions are quite related, so we'll address them in tandem. But we have a wonderful question here about how most people are paying for anti-obesity medications. One, one participant is asking if people tend to pay for these, these medications out of pocket or if insurance is covering these. And the second part to this question from Jill Valdez, and it's a great one, is how to address the very high cost of obesity medications. Apparently, the city, according to Jill, did a cost analysis and it was significant. So again, first, we'd love to hear about how people are tending to pay for medications, whether out of pocket or by insurance. And then also secondarily, how we can address the high cost of those medications.
Well, I can start, start it off. I'm not sure if Dr. Shane or Dr. Eisenhardt wants to, to add to this. You know, initially, when you, when you look at studies like the, the action study that was done based on the wellness programs. The wellness programs that are historically offered by insurances that, you know, quote unquote, cover. An employee for, for wellness. Really only covers nutrition, behavioral modification and, and exercise. It's, it's more prevention oriented than it is treatment oriented. And that being said. It's been very, it's been very unremarkable, you know, and with minimal impact, to be quite frank, affecting only four to five percent. I think if you, if you looked at the numbers, really only seventeen percent of the employees with obesity. Take part in those prevention programs, most likely because they've already failed the prevention aspect of it. Compared to seventy-two percent of the employers feeling that it's been a beneficial program. So we need to identify that there is a gap that exists for those that already have obesity. There's a lack of treatment because that's where they're at right now is that they need the treatment. So there, we really, as advocates, want to get insurances. And employers to understand that there is inaccessibility. First and foremost, to these AOMs, to the anti-obesity medications that really needs to be addressed. And, and if, if they were to honestly look at treating obesity with all the direct and indirect costs. That, that they contend with. You know, anything from the direct costs of their health issues to the indirect costs of presenteeism, absenteeism, disability claims. They're outlandishly high. I, I think what they would find by covering AOMs is that they may have actually. Healthier employees with less disability claims, less injuries, less costs in general. But they also may have better retention rates of their employees and or. The, the employers that actually offer these kinds of benefits may, may attract even. An employee that they might be looking for specifically. So I think you have to offset the costs of the AOMs with what you're saving with the ROI.
Yeah, those, those are all excellent points. And you know, just to add one more thing to Dr. Trippi's discussion, you know, so the comment was. That the, some of the medications to address the GI side effects, these medications tend to be expensive. Well, the issue with these medications is the GI side effects are usually in the beginning, in the, sort of in the initial treatment phase. And then the patients become a lot more tolerant of the medication and the GI side effects fall away. So that cost is not. Continues and it's not long term, you know. The other thing about the cost of medication is when you compare the cost of medication to, let's say, the treatment of diabetes, treatment hypertension, sleep apnea. And then the improvement in all of those medical comorbidities that are caused by the anti-obesity medications, you know. The cost benefit analysis changes significantly in favor of using the medications and not denying them for the patients. Same goes for surgery, actually. It's much cheaper to do an ounce of prevention now and try to treat the disease before it gets out of hand. Versus wait for these patients to develop terrible diabetes or hypertension issues and then deal with those medical comorbidities lifelong. So yes, the cost can be an issue, especially in the beginning. But long term, the cost benefit analysis definitely bears out positive benefits of using anti-obesity medications and surgery for management of these patients.
Thanks so much, Dr. A, for jumping in and addressing Jill's follow-up. That was crucial to hear. We have another question here in chat from Thomas, and I'm going to go ahead and read it verbatim because it's, it's quite good, quite important. How do we reconcile the difference in perspective between academic medicine and professional? And professional organizations considering obesity as a chronic disease? Versus CMS and other commercial payers that still see it as mostly a quote cosmetic issue? How do we align the perspectives?
Well, if I made, this is actually a perfect lead in to the reason why we created the Nevada Obesity Collaborative. You know, this is exactly what sort of our. Statement of purpose is in, um, our goal is to create awareness in both. Civilian population as well as the medical community and. Pretty much everybody who deals with people and patients with obesity. As to why this is not a cosmetic issue. This is truly a medical condition requiring lifelong medical treatment and surgical treatment. And, you know, obviously it's going to take a while, it's going to take a lot of effort to do that, but we will get there. We will. Get the medical community and the government recognize. Why this is important and why this is a medical disease and not just a condition or a cosmetic problem that some patients have because of the lack of willpower, for example.
You know, it's going to take education on a lot of different levels, you know, starting with physicians. You know, there's, there's a, I, I would say there is definitely some bias and some discrimination. To this disease appearing to be that of self-inflicted. And character flawed. But when we again look at the AMA amongst many other reputable and respectable. Associations identifying this as a disease. Then as an academia scientist, et cetera, you must accept that fact. Because these are all our governing bodies. It'd be hard to negate this. But what, what once was thought of fat. Adipose tissue was thought of as being just this indolent. Non-functional. Organ system truly is the most. Active and metabolically challenging. Tissue that we scientifically find. To be linked to cancers and. Linked to. Arrangement of metabolism and such. So. Just the, the whole perspective of being overweight, suffering from obesity. It is clearly changing and it, and it does need to change because we are very well aware in our advocacy programs that. There is a stigma and a bias associated with, with having the disease of obesity and that, that truly is going to take education on our part.
Thank you very much, Dr. Trippi and Dr. Eisenberg as well for your comments there and for, of course, highlighting the very real need. For our collaborative effort here in the state of Nevada and I'm hoping. That, you know, even though right now we're, we're sitting at the bottom of so many, so many rankings and. With amid so many outcomes that our efforts here, uh, you know, starting today, starting with this group. Will start to create some sea change. And I think that there's reason for hope and, you know, I think. To close out the call today, uh, we've wrapped up all of the questions in chat. Thank you for those who participated. We have a couple more minutes here. I'm going to very quickly put some folks on the spot for a moment. It's not going to be too painful, I promise, but as part of the Nevada Obesity Collaborative, we, we maintain. Focus along three individual work streams. And I would love it if the chairs of those individual work streams could share with us a little bit. About what they do in their group and what one of their goals is for this, uh, for this coming season. And so I might, uh, I am going to ask Dr. Shane to share first and then I'll go ahead and turn it over to. Chris Iverson to share next and then we'll finish with Dr. Eisenberg to share what's happening in his group.
Yeah, I'm currently chairing the, uh, obesity prevention work stream. And currently we're, uh, you know, our, our charge is to. Look at. Programs that are already in place in regard to doing. Good work in, in, in that, in that realm and also. Hopefully in the near future will be supporting the, the new statewide 5210. Initiative and if for the, for those of you who are not aware of 5210, 5210 represents for. Healthy behaviors that are very important for chronic disease prevention and also achieving healthy weight and that is five or more fruits. In vegetables or portions of vegetables a day. Two hours or less of recreational screen time, one hour or more of moderate physical activity and zero sugary drinks. So those are five. Simple, easy to get. Or understand behaviors harder to, to achieve than, than to, uh, you know. Then, um, understand. But, uh, this is a, a messaging. Platform that was developed in the state of Maine around 15 years ago. We used it to develop 5210 Healthy Wash Show back in 2018. Which is a, a program here locally that were, uh, that's. Gained some traction in our local school district and we're hoping to take it to the state level. And, uh, hopefully later in this spring. Hopefully May is what we're looking at. So hopefully we have, when we have this packaged. We'll be able to provide or come up with ways where this collaborative can better support that. Program and get. Good community engagement and good penetration within communities because like has already been mentioned, this is a multifactorial problem. And it's going to require a multi. Sector or multi-level approach. Within our, within our communities. To make it, make a real dent in the issue.
Thanks so much, Shane, of course. All right. Chris Iverson, you're up next.
Hi, um, thank you. And I did want to just mention that if any of you are interested in joining the employer group, please, uh, let us know because we're always looking for. Engaged members. For the employer work group, um, our overall goal is to improve health and benefits, obesity literacy. Within the employer ecosystem, including employers and address stigma. And that's a new phrase that, that was new to me, the employer. Ecosystem and it within that it's brokers, health plans, the chambers, third party administrators, data providers. Health underwriters. So we're trying to look at, at the big picture, if you will. We also are going to work towards executing the employer health summit in October. Stay tuned. Um, you'll hear a lot more about that. And building obesity awareness and combating stigma among employers and insurers. And opportunities for employees and employers to come together. So that's a high level of some of the things that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. All right, Dr. Eisenberg, would you like to finish us out?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Christine. I appreciate it. Um, actually, Kristen Fredrickson and I were both co-chairing this. Working group, you know, we're working on a few different aspects. One is. About the Fredrickson actually reached out to. KTVN, I believe, uh, one of the TV stations here in Reno to. Interview some of our stakeholders. So I think her, Dr. Shane, some other people may potentially be appearing on local TVs. So stay tuned for that. We, again, Dr. Shane was instrumental, we drafted a letter to be sent to the legislation. To the state legislation here in Nevada. There's a legislative day coming up for physicians to participate in Carson City as well. And, um. There are a couple of other efforts there we're working on right now that has to do with. Touching base and kind of reaching out to the legislations here in Nevada. To allow them to appreciate what we do and to appreciate the sort of the importance of the. Disease of obesity and the difficulties we're having in getting patients access to appropriate care, but that's all sort of in the works right now.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Eisenberg. And again, um, you know, we're, we're wrapping up this call right now, but the work is ongoing. If you're interested in participating in the Nevada Obesity Collaborative, I would encourage you to reach out to me. I'll go ahead and send a, send a follow-up email. After, after this call is complete so that you know how to get ahold of me. But some other next steps to pursue, Obesity Care Week in 2023 is coming up. And there is a speaker series. If you would, if you would like to learn more, especially if. You are in that employer ecosystem and want to hear more about obesity, its comorbidities. And some mitigating effects, um, you can go ahead and join us, uh, on Wednesday, March 1st from 3:00 to 4:00 PM Eastern. Or on Thursday, March 2nd from noon to 1:00 PM Eastern, uh, for some more information and of course. That follow-up will be in your email after this call is complete as well. So. I want to thank all of you for being here. Uh, you are much appreciated and again, we hope that you will join our efforts. Thank you so much. We'll see you next time.
Hey, Christine?
Yes.
What, uh, I didn't know if you wanted to. Mention the, uh. The speaker that we're having on March, is it March 14th?
Yes, indeed. So on March 14th, uh, we are going to be inviting, uh, Dr. Rogers, uh, from Maine to join us and. She was one of the foremost architects of the, of Maine's equivalent of 5210 Wash Show. Um, and also the statewide initiative that's going on and she's going to be able to give us some fantastic insight. When it comes to, uh, you know, mitigating obesity from a public health perspective, addressing stigma, addressing bias. And we're very much looking forward to picking her brain. And so if you'd like to join us for that call, please reach out to me. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and sign off for the day. Thank you, everyone. Uh, we will see you again soon.
Thanks, Christine. I, thank you so much.